Well, good evening. I call this meeting to order, a special meeting of the York County School Board for September 9th, 2019. We're heading into another week of school and our first week was exciting for our students, our teachers, and our entire staff. So on Friday, most of the area, we escaped the storm, the rain that came through without much damage that some of the others around us or in other parts of the country experienced. So we're very thankful for that and our prayers go out to them. So for presentations, we have several presentations lined up this evening and the first one is the Opening of School Report and Dr. Shandor, I'll let you take it from there.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Good morning or good evening.[53.44][53.44](laughter) Great start to the school year. Good evening, board members. I have an opening of school report for you this evening. So we're already into our second week of school and this evening I want to share just a brief update related to the opening of school year. Last week, I had the opportunity to visit most of our schools as well as our maintenance and transportation departments. However, as Mr. Richardson just shared, the weather forecast changed many of our schedules, but the most important factor in making decisions is the safety of our students, staff, and our families. Over the summer, our team's been busy doing multiple projects in order to prepare for a new school year and I want to share just a few of those with you this evening. So our maintenance staff, under the leadership of Mr. Greg Dolak, who is behind me, they managed to clean 1.8 million square feet, which is in all 19 of our schools and they've done a wonderful job with that. We do have some open custodial positions that Dr. Vladu will share a little bit about that with you later, but a sincere thanks goes out to all of our maintenance staff, all of our custodians who put all the time in. We had a number of projects with something to get into. They do an amazing, amazing job for us. A few things that we accomplished this summer as far as construction goes. We created security vestibules and renovated the main office. The main offices at Coventry Elementary School, Mount Vernon, and the Grafton School complex. We replaced gym floors and painted the gyms at Dare, TAB, and Mount Vernon Elementary Schools. We repaired and recoded the entire low-slope roof at Dare Elementary School. We started construction of the breezeway enclosures at Dare Elementary School as well as Mount Vernon. We're finishing installation of metal roofs at Coventry, TAB Elementary, and TAB Middle. We expanded and repaved the parking lot at Yorktown Elementary School. We replaced the HVAC systems and installed LED lighting at Grafton High School. We also installed two modular classrooms at Bethel Manor Elementary and one at Grafton-Bethel and we started construction on the new learning commons at York High and we renovated four bathrooms there as well. All the updates look great and I appreciate all the hard work of many committed people to get things ready for the opening school year, especially Dr. Carroll's team within operations and Mr. Sheerhardt, who's sitting behind me as well. They put a lot of work in with the support of the county to get those projects moved along. In transportation, over the summer, all 160 buses were inspected and underwent maintenance and service. I did want to share the statistic, the Transportation Department received a total of 1,804 phone calls on the first day of school. So that's obviously a lot of calls. We also put additional staffing down there for the first few days of school. Currently, we're processing numerous requests for pickups and drop-offs. A lot of that I know happened last week. We did experience some late buses on day one, which is typical. Again, as I said, we provided extra staff to assist with parent communication. I'm really proud of Mr. Lash and his team and all of our drivers for getting our kids to and from school safely. So all of this work prepared us for welcoming 12,831 students on September 3rd, which was the first day of school. The enrollment number has grown every day. Today is day four of the 10-day headcount process. We're at 12,997 and we monitor this very closely. Our budget projection again was 12,985. We exceeded that number by 12 students. Also, as I share every year, we welcomed 950 students as members of the class of 2032, which is this year's kindergarten class. This increased 65 students from last year and I did want to share a couple of fun facts from our first day of school. We served approximately 30,000 ounces of milk, which equals 234 gallons, which equates to three 80-gallon bathtubs. Why I share that every year, I have no idea.[296.12][296.12](laughter) And then we also, we served approximately 9,375 chicken nuggets. No idea how many chickens it took for all those nuggets, but maybe someone can figure out that for us last year. We worked through some of the usual challenges this year, but overall, we had a very successful first week of school, other than the storm, and I think we navigated that as well and I think we were blessed to get through that. So with that said, this concludes my opening of school report.
Any questions? Comments? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Shandor, for sharing that information and we're looking forward to another great school year. Thank you. So next, we have our staffing report on our agenda and I'll let you elaborate on that.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Next, Dr. Tony Vladu, Chief Human Resource Officer, is going to provide an update on the status of summer hiring as well as as current as the fourth day of school. Dr. Vladu?
Mr. Richardson, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor, our department has also been busy this summer recruiting and hiring for both licensed and non-licensed position. Also, over the summer, we held two job fairs, one in the northern area in Williamsburg and as well as one in down at TAB High School to accommodate staff at both ends of the county. Beginning in mid-August and going through the 10-day count, we closely monitor student enrollment numbers and so far, we're on target to meet or slightly exceed our targeted projection. Where needed, we allot additional resources. As of today, we have three teaching positions open, which includes two newly, or correction, three newly allotted elementary teachers during the last week in August. As a point of comparison, last year at the same time, we had 6.4 licensed positions open at this time again. In review of some historic data, we're in much better shape than in years past. So we continue to monitor student enrollment through the 10-day count and there may be additional teacher allocation, but that's also dependent on student enrollment. That we will again have those meetings. Now to an update on our non-licensed positions. As a point of comparison, last year during the first week in September, we had 35 non-licensed position open. It's also important to remember that at any time during the given school year, we have approximately 25 positions that remain open. This year, we have approximately 38 non-licensed position open and while we're about where we were last year, we still need some work to do in this area to fill these positions. Our two largest vacancies are parent educators and custodians. In this regard, we have multiple individuals at varying stages of the hiring process and we're confident in making progress in these areas. Next month, I'll present the annual class size report. We'll be able to provide additional detail. At this time, I'd be happy to take any questions that you may have.
I do have one, if I may. Looking at the McGruder Zone and the Yorktown Elementary Zone, again, looking at that, eventually a new school elementary, if at all possible, with the student, increasing the number of students. Long comment to get to my question. We were concerned that McGruder and Yorktown were full and with extended with their mobile units outside and McGruder, you don't have any more extended space. Have those, and over the last year, those principals thought that they were okay maintaining the size that they have. Have we seen growth in those two schools that would make those two schools more crowded? More concerns with those in particular?
Jim, do you want to answer that or Tony?
Tony's seen the latest numbers.
So we've looked at it and we've monitored and looked at each individual school over the 10-day count. We have not seen as much growth in those areas and actually, that growth seems to be evenly distributed both. There are slight variations at the secondary and elementary, but we have some other schools that we've seen more growth than anticipated and we have responded to that growth by allotting additional resources.
I just, it's interesting seeing the areas around the McGruder Zone, development and the more of the homes, especially with this mill filling up. Okay, thank you.
I would just add that Yorktown's numbers had receded from a high a couple of years ago, so any growth there would be getting back to a number we were at.
I knew you were comfortable where Yorktown was a year or so ago, so, okay.
Thank you and thank you, Dr. Vladu, for that report. So next, we have two updates on the strategic plan, one for our state and federal targets and also our third grade reading, which are kind of combined, I believe, so I'll let you take it from there for those two reports.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. So I'm turning it over now to Dr. Stephanie Guy, who's our chief academic officer, and two of her directors, Candy Skinner, who is our director of elementary schools, and Angie Siders, who is our director of secondary schools. They are going to present a lot of information to you this evening. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Dr. Guy.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Good evening, Mr. Richardson, members of the board. Tonight, we'll provide an update on the first two objectives listed under Goal One of the strategic plan. I'll provide an update on the changes to state accreditation and federal accountability along with a broad overview of the division's success with respect to accreditation and federal targets. Then I'll turn it over to Ms. Skinner and Ms. Siders to address our performance at the elementary and secondary level. In addition to the data, they'll identify specific actions taken to which we attribute our successes and next steps for identifying the areas of growth. Goal One of the York County School Division Strategic Plan states that York County students will consistently demonstrate growth and excellence in the skills and knowledge needed to be productive citizens. Under Goal One of the strategic plan, there are two objectives we'll address this evening. You'll see each of these objectives individually as we move through the presentation. The first objective speaks to our performance on the standards of learning assessments. As has been shared in previous years, the way in which test results are calculated and data is utilized is different for state accreditation than it is for federal accountability purposes. With that being said, I'd like to walk you through some of the more significant changes. Last year, I shared that the state had revised the standards of accreditation. Prior to FY19, the standards of accreditation included performance on SOL tests and graduation completion. The new standards look at both of these, but also include chronic absenteeism, dropout rates, and college career and civic readiness. In the past, accreditation looked at the performance of all students on the SOLs in English, reading and writing combined, math, science, and social studies. The new standards eliminated social studies as a measure for determining accreditation. In the past, subgroup performance in English and math was reported for federal accountability only. Now, subgroups are a measure of accreditation in English and math. Previously, accreditation standards looked only at pass rates. The new standards recognize growth as an important measure and pass rates include students who failed the SOL but demonstrated growth from the previous year. Additionally, it includes English learners who failed the reading SOL but demonstrated growth in English proficiency. So how does the state calculate growth? You may remember this from last year. This slide shows the growth table for reading. If a student in grades four through eight fails the reading SOL test but moves up at least one level from the previous year, that student has demonstrated growth. For example, let's take a look at the two blue boxes on the screen. If a seventh grader failed the reading SOL test this year with a score of 350, so it'd be in that range right there. But last year, as a sixth grader, he or she failed with a score of 300. That student has moved from below basic high to basic low and has therefore demonstrated growth. Similar growth tables are provided for mathematics. So back to our comparison of old versus new standards. In the past, the three-year average was utilized only if a school missed the target pass rate in the current year. With the new standards, the state utilizes whichever score is higher. For example, the pass rate for Waller Mill Elementary School for the current year in reading is 96%, well above the target of 75%. However, because their three-year average is 97%, that's what you'll see on the accreditation report. Lastly, the way in which the state considers small n has also changed. Previously, if a school had less than 30 students and missed the target pass rate in the current year, it was excluded from the accreditation calculation. Now, if a school has less than 30 students in the current year and misses the target, the state looks at the three-year average, if 30 or more. So schools previously protected by small n will now be captured in the three-year average. So how does the state determine accreditation? If all school quality indicators, which you see in the table on the right, are Level One or Two, a school is accredited. If a school has any one of these indicators at Level Three, the school is accredited with conditions. With that being said, once again, we anticipate that all 19 YCSD schools will be fully accredited for FY20. We're proud of this accomplishment and would like to recognize our hard-working students, dedicated teachers and administrators, and support of York County families. It is because of the collective efforts of these groups that we continue to achieve at such high levels year after year. So how's federal accountability different from state accreditation? There are several differences and rather than read through each of them, I'll highlight just three. The first one is participation rates. Federal accountability looks at participation rates. State accreditation does not. And 95% is the expected participation rate. Secondly, pass rates for federal accountability exclude growth and English learner progress. So they're pretty much a straight pass rate, whereas for accreditation, I just shared that that is part of the accreditation process. And last but not least, chronic absenteeism is calculated not only for all students as it is for accreditation purposes, but by subgroup as well. Lastly, you may be wondering how federal accountability results are utilized. These indicators are used to identify schools for support and improvement.
Can I ask a quick question? How do they define chronic absenteeism?
I'm glad you asked. I'm about to tell you.[995.81][995.81](laughter) Okay. A student is considered chronically absent if he or she misses 10% or more of the school year, whether excused or unexcused. So it's different from truancy.
So if a child was ill and there was definite medical information to support that, that still would be a chronic absenteeism?
Yes, it would be. Yes, it would be unless that student went on homebound. If a student goes on homebound, then they're excluded from that calculation.
Okay.
So state accreditation looks at all students as a collective group and a Level One rating requires that the school have no more than 15% of the student population identified as chronically absent. Federal accountability standards look at all students in subgroups. Last year, the criteria for meeting this standard was much more rigorous than the criteria for state accreditation. This year, as you can see, there's only a 1% point difference for all students and only Asian students and English learners have a more rigorous threshold of 10% and 13%. So how did we do? As you take a look at this, I want you to realize none is good. So if you see none, that is positive. So I'm pleased to report that the division and 12 of 19 schools met all federal targets this year. This is a significant improvement from last year, where only six schools met all federal targets. To reiterate, the division and twice as many schools met all federal targets this year. All but five schools reduced chronic absenteeism from the previous year for all students. One reason for this change is improved communication about attendance policies and procedures. Additionally, the state revised the targets for federal reporting to better represent current absenteeism data trends for all students and specific subgroups across the state The next few slides speak to the performance of our subgroups at the division level and again, this is federal reporting data, so these are straight pass rates, more or less. These charts are based on federal, I'm repeating myself, excuse me. In this graph, our pass rates for 2015 are gray, 2016 are green, 2017 are dark blue, 2018 are maroon, and pass rates for 2019 are light blue. The federal targets are white with a black outline and you'll see this color scheme repeated throughout this presentation. So how did we do in reading? The division met or exceeded all federal targets. As you can see, our performance in reading declined from the previous year for all students and every subgroup except Black students, where we saw a slight increase. Our decline mirrors the decline observed across the state, so I'd like to share some slides that were prepared by the Virginia Department of Education and were recently shared by the state superintendent, as I think they're a great visual representation of how our students performed as compared with other divisions across the Commonwealth. So this slide and several others illustrate SOL reading performance by division. I've circled YCSD on the map to help you find our division amongst all those other school divisions. So if you look at the key, you'll see that YCSD is one of only three school divisions in the state that demonstrated pass rates in the 90s. So even though we've seen a decline, it's matching what we're seeing at the state level. And that doesn't mean, you'll hear more information later about what we're doing to work to address this, so it doesn't mean that we're okay with this, but we wanted you to have context. African-American students. When you take a look at this, it is disturbing. There's a lot of red there and so all the school divisions that are in red, that is a 0 to 69% pass rate for African-American students. If you'll take a look at YCSD, you'll see that although we are not in the top tier, we're in the 75 to 79% band. We are outpacing most school divisions across the state and our African-American students ranked eighth best in the state in terms of performance. So again, we have work to do, but we are still outperforming other divisions. And I also wanted to share this one, economically disadvantaged students. Our students, economically disadvantaged students fell in the 70 to 75% range, ranking in the top 15 in the state. As a side note, I did not include the graphic for students with disabilities as the entire map is red, YCSD included. However, it is important to note that our students with disabilities rank fifth highest in the state in terms of their performance. So math. In math, the division once again met or exceeded all federal targets this year and I'm pleased to share that with a 93.4% pass rate for all students. Only one school division in the state outperformed us. As you can see, performance in mathematics improved for every single subgroup from last year and our pass rates are at their highest level in five years. Students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged students, and English learners demonstrated the greatest gains from 2018 to 2019. And this was a new test this year for the mathematics. Lastly, this graph shows our performance on the federal graduation indicator and once again, the division exceeded all federal graduation targets. It is important to remember that FGI is a four-year cohort and includes only standard and advanced studies diplomas. As such, students with disabilities and English learners that may stay in school until age 22 and may need more time to graduate with a standard and advanced studies diploma are not represented in this data. Additionally, prior to this year, FGI has always lagged by one year. So when you look at the FY18 data, you're actually looking at 2017 graduates, whereas when you look at the FY19 data, you are looking at 2019 graduates. So that being said, all students in every subgroup but one demonstrated growth. Our White students maintained a pass rate of 95%. Black students, students with disabilities, and economically disadvantaged students demonstrated the greatest growth. Additionally, the gap for Black students has been reduced to less than two percentage points and that's whether you compare them to all students or whether you compare them with White students. This concludes my portion of the presentation before I turn it over to Ms. Skinner. Are there any questions?
If I may piggyback, back to the chronic absenteeism. I have known in just over the course of years and how we've looked at students, if you miss so many days, in essence, you've missed so many, so much of the learning that you failed the class, so to speak. How do we, how are we going to monitor this chronic absenteeism and to piggybacking with the families or just what? Any idea how we're going to approach that issue?
Yeah, we actually, our IT department created a, I'm not sure what tool, they created a tool for us so we can, principals and staff in the buildings can get on-time data throughout the school year to track their chronic absenteeism. And it also, it tracks it not only by all students, but by subgroups. Lisa, is there anything else that I missed in terms of that description of that program?
That's a great description and it does the 10% based on the number of days that we've been in school. So it's constantly updating that 10%.
Because that is a, that is a critical piece. It doesn't just look at 180 school days and divide and take the 10% as 18. If I come in in November, it's going to look at what day Stephanie started and then take the total number of days and divide that and look at 10% of that. So that's a big piece and so we also, I think, where's Dr. Butler? I think we utilize some grant funds to provide a resource at the secondary level. They're called?
Student Connection Coaches.
Student Connection Coaches. And so we're taking a more proactive approach in terms of building relationships with students and families. A lot of our schools have put bulletin boards or notices right where parents and students check out that talk about how many, what their attendance rate is for that day, just to kind of put it out there, how important attendance is. I know a lot of our elementary principals have sent out communications talking about how every minute counts and how some of our principals last year shared with parents in the parent pickup line how important it was that they not pick up their students early. That doesn't factor into the chronic absenteeism if they're leaving school early, but it does factor into lost instructional time.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you. Sounds like the communication has been drastically improved to make sure that's impressive.
Yeah. IT, Troy Graves in particular, they've just done an amazing job because it, last year, if you'll remember from the presentation, it was in the summertime that we learned how the state was going to calculate chronic absenteeism. So we were working from behind the curve last year, whereas this year, we knew it, we had the information for our principals and our staff at the beginning of the school year with the program that he created.
Good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for providing me an opportunity to give you an update on our elementary performance this evening. As Dr. Guy shared earlier, we do anticipate that all of our elementary schools will be fully accredited this year. This slide illustrates some of those accomplishments that we have achieved. And on this chart, you'll see, you'll notice two columns that list 2019 results. The gray column is our own calculated data. That allows us to give a straight comparison, in other words, apples-to-apples comparisons in the last four school years. The blue column shows our proficiency and growth data and that is what the state uses to calculate our accreditation scores. And then at the bottom, you'll see the dark, the dark box and that just gives further information about that proficiency and growth data. And then one other thing you might notice are the asterisks and as Dr. Guy shared earlier, those indicate a three-year average, not necessarily the results for FY19. Depends on which one of those is a higher number. So as you can see in this chart, each school did show progress in math this year. All of our schools had math pass rates in the 90s and in English, two of our schools did show progress, while three of our schools maintained their current pass rate in the high 90s, excuse me. The five other schools showed slight declines in one or two percentage points in English and nine of our 10 schools had scores in the 90s in both English and math this year. And then finally, I'd like to highlight McGruder. McGruder Elementary School, as you can see, had gains in both English and math this school year, so we're very excited for that. All right. So the information on this next slide shows how each of our elementary schools performed on the school quality indicators, which is used to determine accreditation for our schools. If a school has a Level One or Level Two in these indicators, the school is considered to be fully accredited. So tonight, I'm pleased to share that eight of our 10 elementary schools achieved a Level One status this year in the area of English and both Dare and Yorktown Elementary Schools received a Level Two rating for academic gaps in English. And the next slide I'm going to share with you goes into a little bit more detail about those two. Dare received a Level Two indicator based on student performance for one subgroup, which was students with disabilities. You can see it's marked there in red because student performance at that level was below 65%. Yorktown received a Level Two based on student performance for two subgroups, Black students and students with disabilities. Their performance is marked in yellow there, fell between 66 and 74%. When a school has two or more student groups at Level Two, they earn a Level Two status for that school. that school quality indicator. If you look at the second chart there at the bottom, that's math, and each of our schools did meet the performance indicators for math this year. The next part of my presentation will include a more detailed part. I'll break those out just a little bit more for both subject areas. So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to go in and share reading performance for grades 3, 4, and 5. So I've included part of the third grade reading update as part of this. So you'll see me, I'm going to share the reading information, and then I'll turn to So this chart shows our reading outcomes and our school division for grades 3, 4, and 5. Similar to this date, our division did have declines in grades 3 and 4 reading, but in grade 3, you will see that we did have growth in three of our schools, as you'll see that's marked there in green. In grade 4, we did have an overall decline of three percentage points. However, I do think it's important to let you know that we are still, we are ranked second in the state of Virginia for 4th grade reading, even with that decline. And then in grade 5, we did have one percentage point gain for the division. Five of our schools made progress, as you can see here. And then I just want to make a special note about McGruder again. As you can see, they had a 17 percentage point gain in 5th grade reading. I want to recognize those teachers and administration there. I got to visit some of their PLC meetings, and I watched them work really hard to make sure that they were aligning the curriculum instruction and assessment, so their hard work certainly paid off. So on this chart, you'll see our division's growth from FY '15 to FY '19 for grade 3 reading. Our goal was to maintain and improve at least last year's performance, but unfortunately, our grade 3 performance did decrease to 83%. Similarly, the state's average decreased to 71%. When, while the division did not meet its goal of 90% this year, I did want to highlight Bethel Manor and Seaford because both schools did have pass rates at 90% and above. Additionally, McGruder and Waller Mill Elementary Schools both showed improvements from last school year. While a small number of our schools did not make progress this year, we do know that there still is work to be done. And in a few moments, I'm going to share some of those next steps that we've, that we've developed moving forward. This slide provides a summary of cohort data for last year's grade 5 students over the past three years. So these are the students that are now sixth graders. As you can see, their performance remains pretty consistent across the schools. They're, all of our schools were in 90% or above in 3rd grade, so if any, all their 3rd graders, if they were at 90%, those students in those schools continued. They kept their scores above 90%. Additionally, three of our schools that were below 90% in grade 3 demonstrated growth over the three school years. So now I'm going to share something, our PALS scores, and I think over the years, you've heard me talk about PALS scores. PALS stands for Biological Awareness Literacy Screening, and I want to provide this to you because I think it does provide a little bit clearer picture about how our grade 3 students are doing when it comes to reading. So if you'll, if you'll see here, first of all, we give that PALS assessment as part of Virginia's Early Intervention Reading Initiative. Every, just about every division in the state of Virginia does administer the PALS assessment. And we do that because it provides us with, it's a screener, but it also gives us diagnostic assessment information. So in other words, we can take that information if the student doesn't meet that benchmark, we know exactly where to begin working with that student and reading. And on the opposite of that, if a child is meeting the benchmark, it still gives us really valuable information that we can use to make instructional decisions for that student as well. And then we give the PALS in kindergarten, we give it in first and second grade, we administer it in the fall, we do a mid-year, and then we do a spring assessment. Additionally, for any students who did not meet the benchmark in second grade, we administer it again in 3rd grade along with any transfer students. So now I'd like to do, show you a little comparison between the two. If you'll look on the left side here, our students who just took a 3rd grade SOL, this is their performance in 2nd grade in the spring when they took the PALS assessment. 90% of those students met the benchmark for PALS when they were in 2nd grade in the spring. When those students took the SOL this past year, you can see 83% of those students passed the SOL test. So what I'd like to do now is take a closer look at those students. If we could, thank you. So on this, you'll see the 17% that did not pass the SOL test. Let's take a little, a little closer look at who those students were as when they were taking the PALS assessment. 49% of those students, and that's 17%, that's roughly 160 students, when they were in 2nd grade, 49% of them met the benchmarks for reading. So that's important to note. 24% of them did not meet the benchmarks at the end of 2nd grade, and then we have 27% that did not have a 2nd grade PALS score. That's not uncommon because we have students that leave us during the school year. We also have students who sometimes get a non-standard accommodation for that assessment and so their score is not indicated on that assessment. I thought that would just be good information for you to have. So now, earlier when I talked about, I wanted to get back about next steps, I'm going to talk a little bit about those now for you. First of all, I think one of the most important things we can do as a division is to really look at where our successes were. We have some schools that did really well on that 3rd grade SOL, and so we've been really trying to figure out what did they do, and we want to share that with our other schools. We want to replicate those successes. So we've been doing that this summer. In addition to that, you'll see there's a picture here. I had a collaborative meeting with my school administrative team, both principals and assistant principals, in August, and we spent some time really analyzing our division and school data. We looked at where our strengths were, we looked at our weaknesses, and then we created a list of expectations and future training topics. We also made some decisions that principals would oversee all grade 3 PLCs this year, and grade 3 would be part of our school improvement plan goals in each school. Additionally, we're going to continue to meet each month to talk about how our students are, how our students are performing in our schools as we're going along in the school year. And last but not least, I want to recognize Bethany Friedman, who's here with us this evening. She's our new K-5 coordinator. Bethany, this summer also provided training, because we have new standards, and they're actually going to be assessed next year on these new standards, just as we were assessed on math this year, new English standard assessment next year. So we did another training this year with our teachers and our administrators to make sure that they really understood what the new standards were about and that the rigor and how the rigor has changed in those. So during that meeting in August, we talked about alignment. We wanted to make sure, as I shared, that our students, excuse me, our teachers really understand how these assessments have changed, because the way that they've changed impacts the way you teach. And I'll give you an example. We used to teach the idea of main idea when you're reading a fiction passage. Well, the state no longer recognizes main idea for fiction, it's now theme. So it's going to be really important that all of our teachers are teaching theme versus main idea so that our students are prepared for that. In addition to that, we have a new assessment platform that we're going to be using. It's Performance Matters. We feel strongly that this is going to give us much more in-depth information about our students as test takers and allow us to make some, some changes or some modifications as we go along in the school year with those students. And last but not least, one of the things that came up in our meeting this summer was stamina and the idea of stamina. When our students take an SOL test, there are several reading passages. For example, the 3rd grade one has three lengthy passages that they have to read and be able to answer. In order to read through that, you have to have a certain level of stamina to make it through those assessments and to maintain attention to detail. So we've made some decisions as a school, as a school division, that in January, we will make sure our students are at three passages so that they can have that opportunity to demonstrate mastery there. Additionally, we're going to be looking at independent reading for our students. We've set some timeframes that we think are good estimates about how long a child should be able to read independently to help build that stamina. And then as the year goes on, we're going to continue to monitor our students. We actually have some observation tools that we've shared with teachers that will help them with that piece. So that's reading. Now I'm going to move over to math, if that's okay. If you recall, this, I shared this slide with you a little while ago. All of our schools had math pass rates this year in the 90s, so very excited about that. And our next slide, just as I shared with, with reading, it breaks it out into schools and grade levels. What's important to note is that asterisk indicates that this was a new year for us when it comes to our standards. And so all of our schools, even with the implementation of our new standards, all of our schools showed growth in one or more grade levels. All of our grade levels showed growth from the previous school year. And the dark green boxes highlight the six schools that showed double-digit gains this year in math. Additionally, I want to just note that we are ranked in the top two school divisions within our region for grade 4 and 5 math, and we're within the top six at the state This graph illustrates the progress that we've made in grade 5 math over the past five years. The division average is at, is at an all-time high of 95% and continues to exceed our state average. And for the first time in five years, all schools earned pass rates in the 90s for grade 5 math. Yes, very proud of, excited for our, our students. So as you can see, our school division has a lot to be proud of in the area of math instruction. I want to first give kudos, as I just said, to our teachers and staff. They've worked really hard over the last two years to make sure that they're aligning instruction, curriculum, and assessment. I also want to give kudos to Kristi Pika, who's here in the audience tonight. Mrs. Pika has, is our math coordinator for K-12, and she led our division in the development of the new standards. She has been giving lots of professional development in the area of structuring the math block. Teaching our teachers how to make some changes there to better align to the standards, unpack the new standards, and also on our math process goals. And last but not least, you could click one more.
Sorry.
That's okay, that's right. I want to thank the board for your allocation of resources. We were able to purchase math manipulatives this past year for our students, not just for the schools but for our teachers. Many of our teachers all have their own math manipulatives to work with students, which is very nice. And this has really helped us go deeper into our standards and sometimes really develop that concrete that students need to before they go to that higher level. So in the year ahead, we plan to continue to train our teachers on specific instructional practices. We want to make sure that we are really helping them develop those critical thinking skills with math and the ability to persevere through really challenging math. So that's our goal for the year ahead. So that's really my presentation for you this evening. I want to thank you for your time, and if there's any questions, I can ask, answer for you before we turn it over to Ms. Siders, I'll be happy to do so.
Good comment, maybe a question. I'm intrigued by how much energy goes into grabbing all those assessments and tools and things and being able to do what you do to figure out individually, you know, what's happening across the division with students and learning. But, you know, we have a, you know, large population of military-dependent students in our division. What percentage of students, you know, move out in a given year? And could that impact, because of course, we have students moving in during the year. They're coming not just from Virginia school, but they're coming from schools from different states. So do y'all calculate that into, into some of the data points that...
At what point is, is their information added to that?
Does that skew or change things? And I don't know, I don't know what the answer is to that question.
One of the, one of the benefits of the Common Core curriculum helps us because our, our standards of learning aligned closely, you know, more closely than before. So when students are in other states, they, when they're coming to us, there is some alignment there already, which is, is good for those students.
So you can pull that in too.
And then we also try, when students move in to our division, to really identify quickly where those students are so that we can make sure that they are at the right level and that we're meeting their needs. If you look at Bethel Manor, which is our most transient school, you know, 90% of their 3rd graders pass the SOL test. That's just a testament to the work that they do. And that's one of the things that they shared with us this summer, is how they do that process to help other schools learn from that.
Good to know.
I think that's going to be a nice challenge because you've identified your, your successes and you celebrate your successes, and you've also identified your weaknesses, the areas of improvement. So how do you balance it and keep the successes high, but now work on the weaknesses and bring them up at the same time?
Then we got someone in IT programming and creating a tool that can we go on the market and actually patent and sell.
Budget, 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 right?
Well, and even beyond that, we didn't speak to the Power BI tool that they have and that will allow us to have a lot more data at our fingertips because most of the, much of the time, we have to do the calculations in-house. And it's only through the programs that they've created for us that we can actually produce the data much, much more quickly. I know Lisa has been very, very appreciative when she is running all the figures for the, with the SOL data, but the chronic absenteeism is a great testament to the work that the IT department does when we say, how can we get this data quickly? Because if you've got to spend hours and hours and hours trying to calculate it, then you're not going to do it on an ongoing basis because you just don't have the time to do it.
It doesn't benefit the schools, it's due. So, but I think the public needs to hear a little bit more just because it's just, it's the resources wrapping around the instruction that are providing you the data you need to go out and do what you need to do or come to the board to request resources and things. It's a great collaboration and a lot of work for everyone, so thank you for all the hard work.
Hey, good evening. At this time, I'm pleased to have the opportunity to present the work on our secondary schools. As Dr. Guy shared earlier, based on preliminary data, we anticipate that all of our middle schools will be fully accredited. The gray columns on this chart show passing rates and may be used to compare this year's performance with past years. As a reminder, the blue column represents state accreditation ratings. Also, any data marked with an asterisk represents a three-year average. We did experience slight declines in overall English performance, however, we have exceeded the state average for both reading and writing. Overall, mathematics improved at least two percentage points from FY '18 in all of our middle schools. Later in this presentation, I will discuss our next steps relating to both English and mathematics instruction. This slide highlights the progress our division made in math for grades 6, 7, and 8. We're excited to share that even with the implementation of the new standards this past school year, all of our schools showed growth in one or more grade levels. In looking at the chart, you can see the significant gains in 8th grade math. If you recall, last year was a course realignment in the area of mathematics. This allowed us to advance students in the 6th and 7th grade to take pre-algebra, which in turn had them take the 8th grade math SOL test. We are proud of Queens Lake Middle and Tad Middle for their gains at multiple grade levels. The information on this slide shows how each middle school performed on the school quality indicators used to determine accreditation status. As Ms. Skinner shared previously, if a school has all Level 1 or Level 2 in these indicators, the school is fully accredited. As we can see, we achieved a Level 1 status in all areas with the exception of the achievement gaps in English, where three of our four schools were Level 2. So let's see why. As you can see, the performance of our students with disabilities continues to be a concern at all four middle schools. And both Queens Lake Middle School and York Middle School performed at a Level 2 for black students. Some bright spots at Grafton Middle School, Tad Middle School, and York Middle School, English learners all went up three percentage points or higher. In mathematics, all four middle schools achieved a Level 1 status for every subgroup. All four middle schools went up four percentage points or higher for students with disabilities. Queens Lake Middle School made a 12% gain with their black students. We are proud of our schools and gains they made in the areas of mathematics. Tonight, I'm also pleased to report that based on preliminary data, all of our high schools are fully accredited. As a reminder, it is important to note that there is no growth measure at the high school level, only EL progress for English. Now I'd like to share a few highlights represented in this table. Using the state's calculation, four or five schools continue to have performance ratings at 91% or higher in English. Also, four of five schools maintain progress in mathematics despite the fact that the number of students tested has been reduced significantly. Also, in science, four or five schools have pass rates in the 90s, again with a reduction in test takers. And lastly, all high schools have graduation and completion indices that equal or exceed Now let's take a closer look at the school quality indicators for our high schools. I'm excited to share that all high schools achieved a Level 1 accreditation rating. We are proud of our high schools for meeting these quality indicators. We are proud of our administrators and teachers and students as well. As you can see, we have only one subgroup in both English and math that performed at a Level 1. a Level Two status, students with disabilities. I also want to share some notable achievements that are not directly evident in this chart. Reading and writing scores for Grafton and York High Black students went up four percentage points. Our division ranked second in the region in English 11, writing, and reading. One area that will require improvement is the English and math performance of our students with disabilities. As I mentioned before, I will share our strategies for improving performance in this area on the next slide. At this time, I would like to take a few moments to discuss our successes and next steps. We appreciate the school board for providing funding for a math coach to support our secondary schools. Our math coach was essential to the improved growth in our student achievement at the middle school level by providing individualized, excuse me, coaching to support the teachers with aligning curriculum, instruction, and assessment to the new math standards and processing goals. In regards to math, last year, we fully implemented the new standards at the secondary level. Our teachers began implementation of the K-12 math model, which focuses on students using mathematical processing goals and provides student learning experience that prepare them to be college and career-ready. We will continue to use the tiered system of supports implemented through the PLC process for the schools that missed one or more targets. With respect to reading performance, we plan to continue or initiate the following. This year, middle school English and special education teachers will continue to receive job-embedded professional development from Two Teach LLC to support effective co-teaching and co-planning. During each site visit, teachers will be trained in peer observations to support one another in implementing co-teaching at the middle school level. Our middle school English and special education teachers will continue training on planning and implementing the use of small group instruction and high-yield instructional strategies during the 90-minute block. The principals, teachers, and I will evaluate the use of our academic labs to make necessary changes to ensure these learning environments address specific and targeted needs of individual students. Principals used the master schedule process this past year to provide reading specialists with additional time to support literacy in the classroom, and this practice will continue. On behalf of our department, many of which are here tonight, we want to thank you for the opportunity to present the results of the work of our students, teachers, school staff, school leaders, and continued support of our parents. At this time, we would like to open the presentation for your questions and comments.
It says new role of math coach. Is that a new math coach or a new role for them? Explain that again if you would.
It's a new math coach that was in a new role last year.
So how many, so there's one of those?
Yes.
For? We have two math coaches. We have one that supports all of our schools, and then we have one that is at Yorktown Elementary School. Because of the magnet program, they had an additional math resource teacher, and we shifted that position to a coaching position.
Is that, is that a sufficient amount of math coaches? It seems like it would be awfully difficult to accommodate the kids.
I think as we talk through the budget process every year, we have those conversations about where are our greatest needs. Certainly, there are additional support positions that we could use, always use to support our schools.
Mark?
How's that for a commitment?
Patent those IT programs.
But you do need the people. I mean, the data tells you where to look. The people are the ones that go in and provide the coaching and support for the teachers. And really, truthfully, Kristi and our math coach that worked across the division were instrumental in providing that support. And likewise, we see that with our, with Bethany with regard to reading. So that's really the instrumental role that our coordinators play is being out in the building, supporting teachers.
Backing up a decade maybe, does the division have more of these positions before we face the crisis that we get?
Maybe ACI positions?
Yes, we have more ACI positions, but we've gotten, we've, we've added those positions back. At the coordinator level is not so much where we cut. We cut, I think we've shifted some positions to create other positions. I think the difference now is in the past, where they may have years ago been more managers of the, their content area, they really are, they support the teachers in the building. They plan professional development. They deliver professional development. They provide one-on-one coaching in all areas of instruction. And so their role has really changed. And so that's what probably makes it more difficult is if I'm just up, I'm up at the school board office writing curriculum, and that's all I do, and I don't mean to diminish it. But if that's, that's only one of their roles, the more important role is out in the school supporting. And you guys can jump in if you.
No, I agree. I agree.
So going to the students with disabilities, you said, and the entire state didn't meet the federal requirements for that?
Yeah, when the, when the state, it's, I'd have to go back. When you look at the state's chart of how the school divisions performed, all of the school divisions across the state, if I had chosen to use that graphic, they were all in red, and they were all in the 60% to 69% range. However, the way that accreditation is done is you have achievement gaps is just one school quality indicator in reading and in mathematics. And so if your schools perform at a certain level, if you get a red in one subgroup, then that would give, only one red gives you a Level Two status, which makes you fully accredited.
So, and you might not know the answer to this question, but if, despite showing gains for individual, like school division, like you were counting with some of the students with disabilities in the different tests, but if the whole state is still having issue, at some point, is there going to be discussion at the state level, the statewide level about why?
Part of the work, part of the work that the state has already initiated is looking at, particularly with the reading assessment, because that's, if you remember when I showed those graphics, those were just for reading, because it is troubling for the state. The state has seen the same decline that we're seeing. And so what, one of the things that they're doing is just like what Candy did with our elementary principals and assistant principals, really digging into our data and looking at who has seen success. The state is, part of their actions are looking at that, that same piece of data of what school divisions are seeing success, what schools are seeing success, so that they can tap into what they're doing. And I feel like I'm monopolizing the conversation.
If you guys want to jump in or if any of my coordinators want to jump in as well.
But it is a, it is an area of struggle. And I think the work we're doing with structured literacy is really going to ultimately change things down the road. But it's, it's a work in progress in terms of where we are with that. I think that will help not only all of our students, but our students with disabilities as well, especially those with reading difficulties.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to tell Dr. Guy and Ms. Skinner and Ms. Siders what a great job they did putting this presentation together. There's a lot of information. So if you're listening at home, it's a, it's a lot of detailed information. So going through this PowerPoint on your own, you'll probably want to watch it so you can hear all the examples that Dr. Guy and the ladies shared. So thank you, guys. I appreciate it. All the other staff members in the room that contributed, contributed to this presentation. I appreciate the work.
Thank you for the hard work and the great presentation. Thank you. So next, we're going to move into our last agenda item, which is relating to the possibility of starting school pre-Labor Day and the planning that would go into that. So I'll ask Dr. Shandor about it.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. We're going to just, we're going to transition a few chairs here. I'm going to ask Dr. Butler, if he'll come up to the table, and he is going to share some information. So Dr. Butler is our Director of School Administration. He also, he wears many, many hats, but one of them is he works with all of our other school districts within the region to put together the regional calendar. He's going to share some information related to some pre-planning that we're looking for for a pre-Labor Day, considering a pre-Labor Day calendar start. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Butler.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Richardson, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. Since 1986, Section 22 dot 1 dash 79 point 1 of Dakota, Virginia, required school divisions to begin the school year the Tuesday after Labor Day unless that school division qualified for a state waiver to begin earlier. This regulation, which is sometimes referred to as the King Dominion Law, allowed for waivers in certain situations. And there were several provisions. One would be if you had an average of eight days during the school year and five in the last 10 years where you had severe weather conditions or energy shortage or some type of emergency situation. If you had a special instructional program in one or more of your schools, or if you were using some type of experimental or innovative program, which was allowed by the Department of Education. However, recently, as far as last school year, 84 of the 132 Virginia school divisions opened in August through one of the waiver processes. This past February, the Virginia General Assembly passed several bills, specifically House Bill 1652 and House Bill 2041, and they were subsequently signed by the governor, allowing school divisions, which had never qualified for a waiver, to set a pre-Labor Day start calendar. There are provisions that school divisions must meet. They must still schedule a minimum of 180 days. They can only begin up to 14 days prior to Labor Day, provided that schools are closed for the Friday immediately preceding Labor Day throughout the holiday. As you know, York County School Division participates in several regional programs, such as the Governor's School, New Horizons, and the Center for Autism. Annually, the participating school divisions develop a regional calendar to better align instructional services and special programs. Understanding that any potential change to the academic calendar will impact all of our families and staff, we will seek community feedback regarding possible changes to school calendars. School division population departments are currently in the process of collaborating to develop a stakeholders' feedback module and timeline. The Regional Calendar Committee and each school division calendar committee will consider the feedback as they move forward in our calendar development. I am available for any questions that you might have at this time concerning this matter.
So we, and I guess, as you look at it from a regional perspective, do you, if there is an agreement to move forward, are we talking a year from now too? Is it too early to even say?
I think it's premature to, to share where we're headed with that right now. I do know that the other school divisions in our region, they're bringing the same sort of talking points to their board to get some feedback and to have some discussion with, with all of the school boards so that we can, as we're asking for information from our community, because we want to certainly meet the needs of our communities, but we certainly need to focus on, to me, this is a really good opportunity to make a change. There's a number of pieces that I've shared with each of the board members related to whether it's AP testing or finishing first semester before the holidays. There's a number of advantages, you know, doing professional development throughout the school year versus all at the beginning. There's a number of advantages to that. But I think this initial first step is us just having the conversation with boards. And then Catherine Goff has worked with the other folks that do her job, the, thank you, the PR stuff, to make sure that we're asking similar questions of our communities in the region.
Do we know if people are talking about just implementing it all-in-one or if it would be like a two-year process, like a week early and then another week?
I don't think we've gotten that far.
Oftentimes, you see articles in the paper that a school division is, is going to move forward, not this school year, but the next school year. So that's, I was just curious. They kind of pinpoint.
Dr. Butler, you shared the date of this happened last year, so we knew that going into this year would have been, you know, way too, way too quick. There's a lot of things to take into consideration when you think about all the construction projects that go on in the school division. I mean, ours alone, we have 14 projects this summer. So if you subtract, how many weeks would that be? Three or four weeks, given when new teachers would come back and all that work? You're really shortening your window of construction for at least one summer.
It's just amazing that we are at this point because several years ago, a group of us went to Richmond and we met with, mostly, conveniently, everybody was out of their office except for Senator Miller, who's the late Senator Miller. And he told us emphatically, no, you do not have my vote to go to school before Labor Day. And he was not going to address the issue, taxation. The money for tourism was entirely too great, and they had done a study, but no educators were on the study. It was just, it's just amazing that we have come to at this point now.
I think it opens up an opportunity.
Oh, yeah.
And if you look at other school divisions across Commonwealth and the dates they open, I mean, it's not something new. It's just that we've been restricted because of where we are.
Our location.
So I think that public input, everybody wrapped their hands around it. And I'm sure folks that have families spread across different school divisions in Virginia or even beyond in other states, they're used to cousins and such going back to school before Labor Day.
Yeah, I know there was a lot of discussion when the Senate bill and the House bill passed, and I know a lot of families even then were excited to possibly see that the calendar would be aligned with the college calendar, the college kids going back and that sort of thing for vacations and time. But again, it's, it's going to be important to find out what our community wants. But also, they got to realize too that we have other, the regional calendar, we got to deal with too. So there's lots of pieces there that, that we need to really focus on and look at too, as in many of our decisions that we make. But any other comments or questions? Okay. Well, thank you, Dr. Butler, for that presentation. Appreciate that. And we'll be back here on Monday, September 23rd, for our regular school board meeting. But we're now in need of a closed session for personnel matters. Is there a motion?
I'm going to represent York County School Board. I'll convene a closed session to discuss personnel matters pursuant to the personnel exemption at Section 2.2 dash 3711A1 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Ford.
Yes, a motion is made by Mrs. Haywood and seconded by Dr. George for the school board to convene a closed session. Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Yes. Meeting is a closed session.